You're joining us on the Zoom. Never mind, there isn't anybody joining us on the Zoom. Okay. I was gonna tell them to stay muted unless they got called on, but okay. Guys, all ready? The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovich. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmalsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Public comment, Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on to a non-agenda item. No, I bumped the mute button accidentally, so. Yes, I. That's why I turned it back on. So, all right. No one wishing to speak. We will move on. Consideration tonight is the budget presentation, and so I will turn it over now to the city administrator to present his proposed 2023 budget.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2023 budget. I'm just gonna take one second here and share my screen so I can put the presentation on. Okay, so thank you again. So tonight is the presentation of the 2023 calendar year budget. First of all, this budget being presented to you is a collaboration of staff. Without everybody sitting here and without the staff of the city, we wouldn't have been able to provide and present a budget to the city council to review. So we'll start with a budget. We'll start with real quick, some property taxes and revenue history. Obviously, property taxes are always a big topic for discussion. So the first slide tonight talks about property taxes. So property taxes in total account for just over 50% of all city revenues. What do they fund? They fund 67% of the general fund expenses, 56% of the recycling costs, 100% of the retiree health insurance program, which is $600,000, and then the general debt services payment, just in excess of $2.8 billion. So that's how the city annually uses its property tax revenue. As you guys know, we're allowed to increase our property tax revenue simply by net new construction. This year, again, is a small amount of 0.37% for new construction, and we can also increase it based on the fire department increases. In total, the property tax levy is projected to increase 1.25% or $166,000 over the 2022 number. So this is a pretty staggering slide mainly for 2023. Obviously, this is the 2022 inflation number, but these are the CPI increases or the net new construction number in the line, which is the lower line in every single year, and then the CPI increase in the bar graph, particularly 2023. The number for the Milwaukee area is about 7.7%, and our net new construction increase is 0.37%. So obviously, the cost of of increases are higher than what we are getting in that new construction for property taxes. This is a chart that summarizes, and I only put the city of Glendale's rates on here. So this is strictly city-by-city comparison for the North Shore communities. We're right in the middle with River Hills at $6.70 per $1,000 of value. So those are the seven communities who represent the North Shore and the different rates. So how does it compare to what somebody pays in Glendale? So for your property tax bill, you can tell residents that for every dollar that they pay, 26 cents goes to the city of Glendale. The majority of it goes to the school, to school districts, and this assumes Glen Hills and Nicolay School District. It's the chart that I used. So the other ones cover the remaining percentage of the property taxes. So we're here fortunate in Glendale to have a large non-residential property tax base. The residential property tax base, I can't see, oh, it's 54% of the total property tax levy is covered by residential property taxes. The remaining percentage is covered by non-residential, so we're fortunate enough here to have non-residential property tax base cover a lot of the property tax levy. So what is it used for? This again breaks it down again here in a chart. The bottom number is the property tax levy that is dedicated towards the general fund. You know, the good news is from 2018 to 2023, the numbers increased by nearly $900,000. The middle number is was used for special revenue funds, primarily the retiree health insurance, and the top number is the debt service number, which has stayed about $2.8 million every year. So expenditure restraint and fund balance. We talked about this, the CPI for this year, 7.7%. Plus, we're allowed to go up by CPI plus 60% of new construction. Glendale's new construction this year is 0.37%. The expenditure restraint does not apply to the debt services amount, so that part is exempt. Fortunately, this year, we're presenting a draft budget to the city council that increases the general fund expenses by 1.4%. The budget last year over 2021 was a 3.15% increase. The anticipated revenue to receive for the state sharing for the expenditure estate program is just over $244,000, which has remained pretty steadily since the last five years. So in 2018, from what I understand, the city council instituted a fund balance policy, which is to use less than 5% of a fund balance in a budget, and the goal of having end-of-the-year fund balance at 25%. So this year, we're using 8.5% of the fund balance. The last year's budget projected to use 4 and 1/4% of the fund balance, and there was a larger deficit, so I don't know how those two related to last year. This year, I plugged in the deficit amount versus the fund balance. It came up with 8.5%. We would still end the year at about a 30% fund balance.
Last year, we were supposed to use 4.5% of the fund balance, but we're likely gonna end up with a slight surplus.
That is correct, yes.
A very conservative budgeting.
Yes.
And you're continuing in that same thing.
We are hopefully continuing that same thing, yes. And again, these fund balance policies are self-imposed. They're not imposed by the state whatsoever. So we'll talk quickly, one slide on 2020 performance. I also always think this is a pretty good thing to do, is the fund balance is projected. The revenue is $620,000 above what was budgeted in 2022. The primary reason for that is building permit fees, and I think John Fellows can attest, that's probably most likely due to the Bay Shore apartment complex, as well as some various commercial Chick-fil-A, Chipotle, things like that around the city that have caused that number to increase. In 2023, we did not assume those same numbers. Obviously, we bumped them up a little bit, but we can't assume this level of construction every year, obviously. Hopefully, it leads to a higher property tax number, too, for 2024. So the the general fund is projected to operate at just about a $50,000 surplus while we projected a $622,000 deficit. So the performance is partly due to the increase in revenue and decrease in expenses due to the fact that there's a number of on-field positions that went throughout the year that were starting to fill up, so we probably won't see that same thing again in 2023. The proprietary fund is projected to operate at a $603,000 surplus. We projected $113,000 deficit. So again, conservative budgeting, I think, helped out in that fund as well. That's for water, sewer and sanitary sewer, storm sewer and sanitary sewer. These other ones are smaller funds. The special events fund, we did not budget for in 2022. We do project to have a surplus of just over, or just under $9,000. We have plugged in pretty much those same numbers for 2023 that we saw in 2022. No, no matter what happens with 4th of July or Music in the Glen, we kept the same program for 2023, at least in the budget. The REM Park is projected to operate at about a $17,000 surplus when a $24,000 surplus was projected. So still up, still operating in the surplus. You know, the North Shore Court, that's one where we had a pretty good performance as well due to increased revenue. From what I understand from Mary Burch, is that we collected fines and things that hadn't been collected in the past. We're starting to catch up and collect, so if if I'm wrong on that, let me know, but I think that's the primary reason.
Is it the North Shore as a whole, or is that just the Glendale portion of the North Shore Court? Because it is a consolidated service, and I believe we're the fiscal agent for it, correct?
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong. That's the North Shore Court as a whole, correct? The special revenue fund number. Okay. So now we'll talk about the real budget for 2023 revenue and expenses. So this is overall for the city. This shows where all of the funds for the city operations come from. I've excluded any TIF revenue from this. That's the only revenue that has been excluded. But again, 50% of all revenue from the city comes from property taxes. Water sewer fund, 24%, other general fund revenue, about 20%. And then the special revenue funds account for, you know, the remaining 10, 15% of all revenue received by the city. I'm gonna show this one more time. This is just in a bar graph. It shows nearly $14 million in property tax revenue and then all the other revenue that is received by the city. This shows the state shared revenues that we received. This is the expenditure estate program, the special utility tax and per capita revenue. I know you guys have seen this in the past. The numbers had declined from 2018 to 2021. We've now started in the last couple of years to see a little resurgence. We're talking tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands of resurgence on this. So it's small amounts, but fortunate that the revenue has increased for these last couple of years for the state shared revenues. So now we'll start to talk about expenditures by type and really kind of, I wanted to narrow down here of where does taxpayer money go and what sort of options are there? So of the of the expenses that we have, the majority of the expenses are salary and benefits, just over $10 million. Contractual costs, which is the cost for MMSD, garbage, recycling, all those sorts of things, total $6 million. Other expenses such as utilities, office supplies are total three, just under $3 million. And then our intergovernmental North Shore agreements total just under $5 million in costs. So where do these money go, this money goes? So we did a little mock of the budget presentation with the chief and other staff the other day. And when it came to this slide, I know the chief kind of shook his head, why do you have to show it? But, you know, it kind of shows that, you know, of the $10 million that we spend in salaries, six of it's public safety or the the police department. So that's where the majority of our personnel expenses go, which is the city's largest expense. You know, I did Charlie a favor, and I split up the public works and then the water sewer and storm sewer in a different one, because they are different funds. I could have combined them and let that that bar be a little bigger, but that's about $2 million in total in in public works activities, but they are, one's part of the general fund, the other one's part of the proprietary fund, so that's why I I split them up. The mayor and council, of course, is the is the one at the end at $67,000. So it gives a little understanding of where the city's personnel expenses are headed. So contractual expenses, I know this looks a little differently, but the sanitary sewer, water and storm sewer are obviously the biggest. This includes our contract for MMSD, for sanitary sewer treatment, the ditching program, any other storm sewer program or water program that makes up well over half of all of the city's expenses for contractual causes are all in the proprietary fund.
I have a question here. To fix about some of the line items, because I know in the memo, you said that there wasn't an increase in water and sewer. There wouldn't be a utility increase. But I said on the MMSD, and this morning, we approved for the upcoming year of the budget, and it does include user charge increases of 5.8%. So unless we're set up to pass those through to our consumer customers that are paying water, water bills, we're going to be eating into the fund balance of the water utility in order to be able to make the payments we have to make to MMSD for stormwater or for sanitary.
So thank you for bringing that up, and I'll have to probably do a little budget judgment adjustment and to put those increases in there, because I did not know about that. But I still think we'll be okay for this year with the proprietary fund. I plan in future years, having long-range projections to maybe start talking about small increases in the water and sewer fund on an annual basis to make sure we're keeping up with our expenses. But that's not included in this year, and and no, I did not have that increased program in here.
One thing we might also consider is just, since the sanitary sewer is a third party, it's not us. They happen to appear on the bill. You know, you pay water bill, it's got water and sewer on there and a few other things, but if we could just set up a policy that whatever that goes up from MMSD, that 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 automatically gets passed through to the customer, because that would automatically keep that fund stable.
We can look at, definitely look at all of.
Right. I mean, we're actually a partner in the North Shore Water Utility, so we get to set the rates there. We have a voice in setting the rates there, but in terms of the sewer, that that's not, it's not in our control, so we're gonna be hit with a 5.8% increase for all the users who receive a water bill from the city. And right now, we're not budgeting to increase, to pass that increase on to them, so.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know about it until this morning, so I was making notes here, things I wanted to bring up tonight, so.
Thank you, that is.
Sure.
Oh, it included in the final budget, the mayor and I'll go through some of those numbers, and you'll see some of the numbers that'll look differently on here than than in the final one to to account for that. So intergovernmental expenses, these count for, let me go back real quick, so I don't forget, almost $5 million in in total expenses. 77% of those expenses, as you can imagine, are for the North Shore Fire Service Agreement. It doesn't include the 1% for the capital outlay for them as well, so it totals about 78% of total intergovernmental expenses. These are all intergovernmental contracts that the city has agreed to for North Shore services, you know, including dispatch, library, health, Humane Society, and Capital Alley for North Shore Fire. So these are all programmed in the budget. I think, I believe I've put in most of the formulas for how these were compiled into the budget, so you can see the background for how how it's been done. And the communication, been a lot of communication back and forth to the other administrators to make sure everybody has the right number for everybody on these revenues and expenses. General fund budget. Now we'll talk specifically general fund. So I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but 66% of it's funded by property taxes. There on there is listed the other revenue sources for the general fund, which is included in the budget as well. The other big one is obviously intergovernmental. That's the state shared revenue that we saw the chart on. So the general fund is projected, revenue is projected to be $400,000 higher than it was in 2022. Most of that is because of taxes. Property taxes, like I said, increased 166,000. There's other increases for the equivalent in taxes for the water and sewer fund and other property taxes that did increase to account for that $255,000. Permit revenue, like I said, increased probably about $500,000 over over the previous year. We're including about $100,000 increase, just a little more permit activity than we'd included in the budget from before.
But Carl, the the money that we're getting for that sign, is that included in this budget or not?
We have not included that in the budget whatsoever. We have an item on the agenda later for some projects for economic development that are not funded in here as well. The idea might be to take some of that money for the sign and put it to reinvest into some of those economic development projects, implementing the comp plan, rewriting the zoning code and doing some of that. That's maybe some of the idea or thought that we had in using those funds, but they have not been included here in this budget at all. So here's the general fund expenses by area. Again, public safety is on the big end. I did the chief a favor, and I didn't do this as a bar, a by, a bar graph. I did it as a pie chart, so 66, or 63%, sorry, of all general fund expenses are public safety related. So these are a little more detail on it. The general fund expenses are projected to increase about $236,000 over the 2022 budget. So salaries are projected to increase just above, just over $64,000. Health insurance is expected to decrease by about $84,000. I don't know where the 80 or the last year budget came in, but we projected all the salaries and what everybody plan is getting, and it came up with an $84,000 decrease. So fortunate for us that that it does. I'm not sure where the baseline for 2022 came in, but it's a good decrease. Contractual costs in total are expected to increase $160,000. The North Shore ingredients, that's another big one, $128,000 of that, 93 is the fire department increase, and central dispatch is $14,000 increase. So those are the increases that we've seen in the general fund. You know, fortunately, health, insurance and benefits in in total go down. The rest of it goes up just a little bit. So in the budget, we've also included a new line item called new projects this year, that those line items are very small, and it's located all in the admin fund. There might be some new projects that the city council elects to include if we move forward with any of the economic development projects that we'll talk about in the in the regular board meeting. We have $4,500 for a time and attendance system. This is sort of an electronic time clock system that the police department instituted last year. We would follow suit and do the same thing in 2023 that the police department did. And then we threw a number in here. We're not exactly sure what the amount will be, and I'm sure Sean doesn't know either. We're trying to track it down. We're required to pay for these Adobe Acrobat licenses. They're, they've started to get more strict, and now they charge you what monthly for those, Sean? Okay, so we threw in a through $2,000 number wherever it lands. We'll see, but hopefully it'll be cheaper than that. So those are two of the new projects for 2023. Quickly go through the special revenue funds. We have 10 special revenue funds. These are not subject to the expenditure restraint program. They're all separate from the general fund, from police, police acquisition, all the way down to the ARPA fund. In the police acquisition, we have some new equipment or new equipment requests as well. Equipment, $7,600, Taser cartridges, sorry, not toner cartridges, 3,500. They may cost that as they may cost that much as well, too. And then we have a process, and the chief could probably talk about this more, is to replace a couple of the tasers a year. I believe our tasers are starting to be phased out, and we can't get replacements. So the idea is to replace a couple a year?
Yes, if we try to do it all at once, Taser likes to give you a big, Axon likes to give you a big package, but it's costs a lot of money. Their concept is you buy everything upfront, and every five years, you do it all over again. So what we're trying to do is just it saves a little bit of money on that aspect. So if we go for a year where we don't need, you know, our tasers are working good, we don't need to replace them, and then we don't need a budget for it.
So the room tax fund, this is funded, obviously, by the tax of people staying at hotels in the city of Glendale. 64% of the revenue stays with the general fund, and the other 35% goes to Welcome to Glendale for tourism and economic development-related activities. The room fund taxes started, obviously, regenerate since COVID. It's gone up, so it's fortunate, more money, and more revenue for the city, and more for Welcome to Glendale to help promote more overnight stays and increase that even more. So it's a good trend to have here. Special events fund, we've included funds in the budget for Music in the Glen and 4th of July. I kept them very consistent to the activities that were in there for 2022. Again, no money was budgeted in 2022. We did expend money for fireworks, obviously, and music in the glen, so we kept consistent with that for 2023. Parks fund, we were fortunately able to decrease the city contribution by several thousand dollars. It was 75, I believe. I took it down to $55,000. Even with that decrease, we still have a projected surplus. We hope to look towards next year as one of our goals, to maybe look for options and alternatives to start increasing some revenue to continually decrease this reliance on property taxes for REM Park. So that'll be hopefully one of the goals that we'll talk about coming up in the future. The American Rescue Plan Fund, the city received about $1.26 million. There are specific requirements for how those funds have to be spent. Staff's gonna need to start looking at ways and opportunities to spend the 1.26 million for capital purposes at the end of '22 into '23, so we can start to use the ARPA funds for the most appropriate expense possible. It's one-time funded, obviously, and we've received our money, and it's.
I believe the only I believe the only thing we've spent anything on so far was lead lateral replacements, right?
Correct, Charlie and Sean? Yep.
Okay, that was a couple hundred thousand? I'm seeing nods, so, okay. And the 1.26 million is what's remaining?
That was the total amount allocated to the city.
Okay. I thought it was a little higher than that. I thought it was like 1.8 or something, but, okay.
To be honest, I stole this slide from last year's presentation, so Sean, if you have any. Okay. So finally, is the enterprise funds. This is the water, sanitary and storm sewer fund. There's been no increases since 2017 for sanitary and storm, and no increases in water since 2018. So we'll do a complete evaluation of the revenue and expense in those funds and next year to maybe bring back some opportunities to try to keep up with some of the expenses that we've had in there, particularly with the MMSD increase for 2020.
I mean, that's interesting, because in this past year, the increase was 2.5%. Next year, it's going to be 5.8%. So those have obviously been sent to the city or to the water utility, and we've been paying an increased amount each year without actually passing that on to the consumers who are purchasing water and sewer from us.
For my five months here, that is my understanding. You know, Sean would probably know more, but we haven't.
Okay, so when MMSD makes an increase and sends it to us, that is passed on, it is reflected on the Okay. Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. That does answer my question. Appreciate it. Oh. Yeah, it was in the mic. So what what Sean just said, for those who are watching online, is that the sanitary sewer, the no rate increase is for the Glendale portion of the sanitary system that we do work on. If MMSD has an increase, it is sent to the water utility, and we are obligated then to put that as an increase on the water bill. So the MMSD portion of the water bill does see any increases if MMSD increases. We just haven't increased the Glendale portion of the sanitary sewer system, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So of the enterprise fund, these are the expenses by the type, sanitary, storm and water. It's broken down this way. The water doesn't include the, I took out the the capital expense, so that probably should be added back in here, but this is simply operating expenses. It doesn't include the, actually, it doesn't include the reimbursement to the general fund, not the capital reimbursement to the general fund for the utility portion of it, so this is general makeup of what the is made up. So the enterprise fund includes all maintenance activities, continues the payment for MMSD. Obviously, we'll talk about the increased payment, and then continues the payment of the ditching program that we started two years ago, Charlie? Two years ago at about $350,000 for the ditching program. I believe this year it was completed in Crestwood. And they've wrapped that up. So we're getting towards the end, capital funds. We have three capital funds, the just the general capital fund, TIF 7, which is the technology district, and TIF 8, which is the Bay Shore TIF. So this is a list of the proposed capital projects. You'll probably note that this is a lot lighter than you've typically seen. I believe that most of the capital projects were deferred till 2024 because of all of the construction associated with the I-43 expansion. So the Port Washington Road expansion, water main replacements and all that are occurring and have been funded in the 2022 budget. So mainly, the items that are in the proposed capital project fund are equipment purchases and general other improvements throughout the city, including everybody's favorite of traffic calming for $100,000. If anyone has any questions about these, I won't go through them individually. We have staff here to answer any questions that you can have. I will say, we did a little about face here. We had a truck, utility truck that was, was it used, Charlie, or brand new? The utility truck that we bought new. We found a new utility truck for $60,000. I authorized that purchase this week. In lieu of this stuff, we've been looking for a truck, so we have a truck to replace another one, so it can plow alleys, and we've had some that are pretty we've had some that are pretty bad shape and Charlie can spot out the details if you need it, but I authorized the purchase, so we'll have to work this around a little bit. We were able to find a truck and not have to wait, so we made the decision to go through with the purchase of it.
We're also keeping capital projects down in twenty twenty three because of the borrowing for the fire department. We're already we're acting as the fiscal agent and doing the borrowing on behalf of the North Shore Fire Department this year. And those bids haven't come in yet, but they're probably going to be somewhere between eight and ten million dollars. And so then you tack on Glendale's borrowing on top of that, and it looks like our municipality is borrowing a lot of money in twenty twenty three. But we're borrowing on behalf of the fire department because the fire department is is not able to do that level of borrowing. So whenever there are improvements like in Shorewood, Shorewood borrowed their Whitefish Bay, Whitefish Bay did the borrowing. Since this is the Glendale station, Glendale will be doing the borrowing. And I know we had talked about trying to keep our capital expenditures lower, which is fine, because a lot of things we needed to push to twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five anyway, because of the freeway, so.
And the bids for the fire district building, I believe, got pushed back three weeks to October thirtieth. So we won't know what the expense of that will be yet either until the end.
Next fire department meeting is on November first to open the bid, so yeah. Yep, John.
Does the graphic calming include the the speed bumps for Tamika? I know that she was interested in getting those as soon as possible.
Well, I know that we have the director of public works, Charlie, as well as Mustafa from Clark Deets. We're supposed to set up a meeting and I think are in the process of with Alderman Schmoseling and Budvik to discuss where to spend those funds at for year one of it's a multi-year plan.
I'll just tell you, I'm going to send you all a video link and some other links, but the city of Carmel, Indiana, which is a hundred thousand people, by the end of next year, will have only one stoplight in the entire city. They have been roundabouts through their entire city. It keeps traffic flowing constantly. Traffic doesn't need to stop. You don't have stoplights. You don't waste time sitting at a stoplight. You don't waste gas sitting at a stoplight. And I seriously think we should start looking at how do we start making some major changes in the future as a community to make traffic flow more easily around the city without having to sit at these these, you know, long stoplights. Like I think it's like Port Washington and Silver Spring, how busy that one is and how long you sit at some of these. The other thing it does is it you can have less lanes because the traffic's moving. You don't need two and three lanes on a lot of the roads. Because traffic's constantly moving, so one lane of traffic that keeps moving, keeps moving. You're able to put in bike lanes, you're able to do. I mean, it's better for the environment. There's a whole host of things. I'm going to send you guys some links of it. But I, you know, I've talked with with both Carl and John about this and you know, I think we should as a community start looking at some of these best practices we're seeing around the country. But a lot of this stuff that, you know, we're talking about spending a hundred thousand dollars on traffic calming, which is putting in speed bumps on a few areas to where people are going too fast. There's a whole lot of design stuff we could start looking at to change over time to actually change the design structure of those roads to make it so that you just can't go as fast anyway and still keep traffic moving, so.
Just to note, I'm not proposing speed bumps right now.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I also believe that you're mid speaking because we are doing traffic calming meetings. We are. This is the last resort is the speed bumps. Mustafa, Mustafa, wait, I always say his name. He is going to be working with us in neighborhoods and at least in my district to say what he thinks is best for calming. The last resort will be the speed bumps. So there it's not speed bumps, but if I need them, that's my money.
Anyone have any questions on here? I know there's a couple squad cars, two plow trucks, new firearms for the police department. Hearing none?
One question.
Yeah.
I thought at one point we talked about having in Alder Bailey's district, a sidewalk going up to Good Hope Road and extending the one on Bernard right now. Where where did that fall? Do you remember in the capital plan?
But I have to defer to Charlie on that one if he knows. I know the sidewalk in that area will be expanded when they redo Good Hope Road. Is that correct? But is there any further plans in that area for a sidewalk? I don't recall on the five year plan.
And is that how much of that do we have to pay for? Is it some? Right? Okay, so isn't our capital budget then just with that project? Thank you.
This is pretty much the conclusion of it. We have the two Tiff districts that everybody knows about. Those costs are automatic based on what the increment that comes in for the technology district. What year does the technology district expire? Sean's a couple of years, right? Twenty seven?
Seven, okay.
And then we all know Bay Shore, we just extended that Tiff another three years, so.
Bay Shore doesn't have any debt attached to it, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
So any questions on the draft twenty twenty three budget?
I'll connect probably on the side with this, but I it looked like most of the Fourth of July money was earmarked as donations. There wasn't anything from the general fund transfer. So I know this past year we needed to do that general fund transfer as kind of a budget amendment. So we just have to make sure we have whatever we work out funded, so we know what to do for our budget next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll have the official public hearing, the first meeting in November. There's a fifteen day waiting period for the public hearing notice. We didn't get it in the paper, unfortunately, for the next meeting, so it'll be pushed the first one in November. Budget as
Have the public hearing and then at that same meeting, after the public hearing is concluded and is closed, then we typically will adopt the budget. You have Alderman Schmoseling?
No, this isn't a public hearing, but I know there's one person in the audience who might want to speak or ask a question. Did you want to bring anything up?
As did you have a question? Can I have you come up then and speak into the microphone? It just make sure that it's actually aimed directly at you. If it gets tilted up in a way, then
A weapon, right?
Nope, but it 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 does. It is directional, so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, one thing I didn't see in there was what the percentage of the pay raises is going to be for people this year because we've got eight percent inflation. I know that may be a sidebar, but I'm just curious.
The city council has not determined what the increases. We just threw in a a budget number just to reserve space for it, which was three and a half percent.
Is that the that's the same as what's already negotiated with the police through their collective bargaining agreement, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
One of the things that the city has always done for twenty five years and some more than that is there's always at least three streets that are repaved and redone. Is that in the contracts this year?
So the the resurfacing, from what I understand, was delayed in twenty twenty three as a result of the the amount of construction work because of the I forty three project and because of the borrowing for the new fire station. So the real road resurfacing and water main projects that we typically see in a year have been pushed back to twenty twenty four.
I guess this last one is always asked this question. What three things were left out on the table that you really wanted to fund, you couldn't fund this year?
So that's a good question. I know I had talks and I won't get specific on this one with other department heads regarding adding certain staff in certain areas, and we did not increase the amount of staff anywhere in this budget versus twenty twenty two.
Wasn't there? But he comes.
That is correct.
Any other questions? All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Alderman.
I just want to say.
Microphone.
Each year it gets easier and easier to read. I did ask because I'm a moron. I had to get mine printed to follow. Oh, thank you, Joey. Thank you. But I I the presentation was solid and I could follow everything. So it just I think our presentations get better and better each each year. And I just wanted to thanks because that's a big deal.
Half the stuff we don't. Well, thank you. And the reason why it's easy, it's because of the staff that you guys have here to help put it all together. So it's really on them of why this stuff flows a while, so I'll thank them too.
Alderman Shaw?
I'll just took my thunder. I was going to say I want to thank the staff for supporting you, being the new person as a city administrator. I know it's the staff who who's done a lot to keep you afloat and have the historical aspect, especially when it comes to numbers because I area of I've always been around and Sean has done, I'm sure, a wonderful job, making sure you get educated.
That is correct.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, we will move on. Consent agenda has two items, adoption of the minutes for our last meeting and approval of accounts payable. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please? Move Alderman Dougherty. Second, second about him and Gelhard. Any discussion? Okay, without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda adopted. I'm seeing no objections, so I will move on. We have four items of new business. The first is review of community development projects and plan. I will turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to probably turn this over to John Fellows to discuss this. This was an item of a multi-year plan that John Fellows, Community Development Director, and myself put together based on what we felt would probably be some enhancements to the community, including a rewrite and streamlining of the zoning code, potential opportunities for retail recruitment, a housing study, and then using the comprehensive plan areas where we looked at certain, what do we call them, John? Target areas to do more precise drawings on those areas to see if that would help further attract retail development. And as you can see, we put together a description of what those would be as well as a a timeline and and some expenses year by year of what we would anticipate. With the retail recruitment, it's about a five thousand dollar expense the first year with a reoccurring cost of, I believe, twenty five hundred. There's always an opportunity to hire a professional to do that. We don't recommend that at this time to help with retail recruitment who know the specific people at the specific places to help recruit them. We feel like we can be assisted by having the data available to us to present to people and to go after, you know, the next Chick-fil-A or the next Chipotle, which would help us out. I know we've talked to Bay Shore about their opportunities. They they obviously do a lot of retail recruitment as well to try to help use their studies as well. So if you have any questions for myself or John, we'll open it up for that. Again, these haven't been included in the budget. The revenue and expense that you see do not include these, and they don't include the three hundred thousand dollars for the billboard sign. So just wanted to preface that that this was sort of a late add, and we did that primarily because we felt this was a multi-year plan. We wanted the city council to engage in first before putting in the budget.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up then to comments, questions from members of the council. So I guess this is taking the city's master plan, which identified certain areas for redevelopment and actually now putting some funding behind how we market those areas to developers.
Yes, and making the zoning code consistent with the goals and accomplishments of the comprehensive plan too.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Alderman Shaw, raising her hand.
With regards to this item, I because it's kind of new to me about targeting some stuff. I'm used to the old way, so to speak, with under Dick Maslowski. So with respect to that, how did you decide on the areas, the target of investment areas that you have listed here?
I'm correct, we're wrong, but those are the seven areas that were targeted in the comprehensive plan.
Just strictly that from the plan that's, you know, existing that, as you say, the comprehensive plan?
They are. So I essentially, you know, went through the comprehensive plan. Carl and I discussed various things, but there are those seven areas that through the public outreach and through talking to council, basically those were areas were identified as target areas for the next number of years through the comprehensive plan, so. Certainly, we could target other areas, but I basically, based on that information and knowledge, assumed those were the primary areas to focus on. And there is no priority in the comprehensive plan, so we can certainly prioritize one over the other from that perspective. If there is one area we wanted to focus on more than another one, we could certainly do that.
I've just wanted to and I old regime. Some things were done, and then I also understand things evolve. And I just wanted to make sure I was following the process.
For and I don't, I think maybe the terminology is a little different. Obviously, I wasn't here when Mr. Maslowski was an administrator, but I do know enough history to know that Silver Spring was targeted as a particular area and then Port Washington and then Bay Shore, those types of things, Mill Road. So these are sort of similar. I would say it's sort of in a similar vein. They're not necessarily corridors. They're kind of more on the map, sort of some bubbles, but in some cases they are a group of maybe three, four, or five parcels in a particular area where the buildings and the uses that used to be there no longer are are in the marketplace. And so for instance, the Oster plant over on Lydell. It has one or two tenants in it. It's a fairly large building. It has a lot more potential. So from a if we think about our tax levy limits and those types of things, we have to be thinking about how are we going to grow and unlike a suburban community to the north of us that have greenfield, we don't really have greenfield, so we have to think internally, how are we going to develop and grow? And so there's those target areas that are some potential. They don't really affect much of the residential neighborhoods, so so they're kind of either commercial or industrial in nature for most of them.
Um, I I think when we were doing the comprehensive plan, like I always expected the next step would be like, how do we take that and apply it to our zoning codes? So I think that's important because it's ubiquitous across the entire city. Target areas, you know, that's great, but from a prioritization perspective, I think that would hit everything to some extent and also bring us more maybe more up to date with some of our neighboring communities that have more newer developments and such. So I I would say that would be if I were just making an opinion, that would be a first place to start. But of course, I also have a special place in my heart for Green Bay and Mill, so. But I know. I have one constituent who really doesn't want stuff to change, but I assure her that it's not going to be drastic down where she lives. But regardless, I I think that, you know, if you get this in place, then it'll build on these other areas as well and set the groundwork for them. So those are my just my general comments, but all good things I think we have to follow through. Otherwise, this comprehensive plan activity really was for not.
Any other question? Are you looking for any direction from us tonight or just you wanted to present this for a sort of food for thought for the time?
Well, we were looking for direction to see what if at a minimum to include for the twenty twenty three budget, do we want to start rewriting the comprehensive plan? Do you want to do one, two, three target areas and then decide which ones later? Do you want to do retail studies, anything like that? That's sort of the direction we're looking for, particularly for the twenty twenty three budget year, because when we bring back the budget for the public hearing, it'd be night. We would like to include those revenues and expenses in 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 the budget for this purpose.
How I've done it and Carl and I have talked about it too, is for sense it's something like a zoning code. If we were to go out for an RFP early in twenty three, we would probably start late spring. Probably what happened is it would be finishing up in twenty four, so it's one of those things where the money can actually be used into over two budgets, so it's not like you have to budget one big chunk. So with a lot of these types of things, it is one of those things that has the opportunity to be spread over multiple years without a big hit in one particular year.
Alderman Dougherty?
The code part was going to be also making it more like Google searchable, right? We were talking about making
That'll happen regardless. This will just make it consistent with that comprehensive plan and make it more towards our goals. Plus, try to clean up. I think a big aspect of it is clean up the use table. We don't really have a use table of what is permitted and not. We want to sort of clean that up in terms of what's allowed and and put it in sort of a graph table of X is allowed, C is conditional, S is a special use, as well as put in a tables for our yard and bulk requirements for setbacks and things like that, heights and 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 stuff like that. And John can tell more specifics. He's
I mean, I think those are sort of the basic cleanup things, which, you know, we can probably tackle a bit on our own, but I think it's really looking at the comprehensive plan, what the goals of the comprehensive plan are. There's a lot of for instance, items about sustainability. So the last community I worked in, the decision was not to make it mandatory, but an incentive. So if somebody actually did do a green roof or do something environmental, they got maybe an extra So if somebody actually did do a green roof or do something environmental, they got maybe an extra, let's say they were doing multifamily, they would get a couple extra bonus density. So if they did something environmentally, they could have a couple extra apartments or something like that. Or, you know, it could work out a lot of different ways from that perspective. So there's a lot of tools and things that are out there in other communities that the development community might be looking for. And so our, our zoning code hasn't been updated in 20 years. So it still functions, but it doesn't necessarily get to the goals of the comprehensive plan and trying to move us forward with those goals.
The technology change, we've already initiated the contract, and it's one flat fee. So regardless of how many changes we have, they have to change the whole thing at no additional cost.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. So another example, I, I know, like, in the comprehensive planet, talked about like accessory buildings, may well have like, you know, mother law suites, and that's not really allowed, at least in the R7 and some of the other residential zoning.
Don't allow it at all. The only way that people tend to get around is they basically build a master bedroom suite that happens to have, you know, maybe a little bit of a lounge area. It's a little bigger than a bedroom. So there's a place for, you know, TV, that kind of thing, maybe a little minibar, that kind of thing, but it's still connected to the house. We haven't been able to, there's no way to really do that with an accessory structure or above someone's garage or something like that, so.
Right, but those are sort of things that would more align to the comprehensive plan, but we could then
Correct.
Look at the right way of doing it with the zoning.
Correct, and we could do that process. We'd look at different options. There, you know, we would probably look at three or four scenarios of how to get that done. We talk about it, see what works, and then we end up, you know, putting that into text.
Wanted to get another example.
So, um, I, I guess, we already went through the comprehensive plan process. We already approved a master plan for 2040. You've just proposed tonight or brought before us some of the target areas that we've looked about that, that were identified in the master plan, and that you would like us to, to consider, I guess, whether we invest some money into studies about those target areas, about retail, about housing. I guess what might be easier for us is, since you are our subject matter experts, would be to bring us your recommendations, and we could have a conversation around those. And, and, you know, what, what timeline do you, do you see? Like, for example, you know, Mr. Fellows just explained a couple of, ideas of things that we might do in a potential timeline for them. So if you may want to put that as an agenda item in a future meeting, we could take the recommendation of staff and, and discuss it and move forward with approvals. I, I think it's kind of hard to ask us as the ones up here to sort of brainstorm where we go next when, when our, when largely what we do is take the advice of the staff and maybe tweak or make changes to it, but largely we move forward based on the professionals that we hire in the different positions. And I appreciate you bringing these up and getting some input from us tonight, but I think our next step would be a future agenda item that has us approving your recommendations to us, so.
And if you want to consider, we do have that in here. On page six of 10, there is a mock timeline that we put together for it.
So in summer, like that zoning, the budget process for '23 and '24. So that would be that particular item and split that amount in half generally. The retail study is only about 5,500, so I think that might be achievable in '23. It certainly would help. I believe we have not a lot of vacancies outside of, in the general community, but we do have some. And we have some potential opportunities, I think we have on the horizon, so that might help us also. And then I guess the question just becomes with housing, there, in the comprehensive plan, there is a lot of items that revolve around housing. And, you know, as I read through those, I also know a little bit about the marketplace, and so we have to match up our goals with what the development community is interested in bringing to Glendale. And so that's where that particular housing study would go. The quote would be that I did get from one consultant was 15 to 20. I chose to put the higher amounts in here. So some of these numbers I do, I would hope would be a little bit more competitive and smaller. I'll just mention that. And then with regard to the target investment areas, I think it really depends on how many you'd like to try to do. Seven is a lot. If you do one a year, that's seven years. By the time five years comes around, we should be reevaluating our comprehensive plan and making sure we're on track and that sort of thing. So in terms of which target areas we pick, I think that's something we can certainly recommend, but we'd need that feedback from council. And I guess it's just a matter of if you're comfortable with that amount of money. We can, Carl's mentioned one place that we could find those funds. Some of that could maybe come out of the budget. We could. So I think, I don't want to speak for Carl, but I guess the question tonight, at least for a little bit of direction for us, would be, are you interested in these things? Yes or no? And then we would come back with a more firm financial plan of what we think we can fit into '23 and where that funding might come from.
Alderman Vukovich?
Um, I, I personally would like to see what these, not so much the money as, but what entails in these, because in my mind, and this is just in my mind, I see things more important than others. So even though you have a priority here of retail, for me, that's not a priority right now, because there, we have Bayshore, we've built that up. Let them build up, I mean, I want to see Lydell get some jobs in there, workforce development, bring in more jobs. So I want to see why you've chose these particular things as priorities and what, what encompasses that? Because, I mean, I'm just saying, it, it just, we have all these new restaurants. I mean, for what it is, we've decided to have these restaurants, these particular restaurants, these particular businesses. But where is the job creation? Where is the corporate pulling in the corporations to try to make Glendale their home? Where's the workforce development, development part of this? I, I guess that's, I want to see where the priorities are.
That was very helpful.
Well, that's just my opinion. And I think the second one would be housing. I mean, most, I think, a lot of Glendale are people who own their homes, but I think I'm the only older person here who, who rents. And there is no place for me to really move right now. If I ever decided to move from my place, I can't, because there's nothing in my district. So I, I mean, and I hear that often where people who want to live in Glendale, but they are younger or, you know, just starting out, but they have no place to rent. And then, you know, the housing, we have great housing market right now, so it's hard to get in here. So I would like to see some of that, what encompasses your priorities, I guess.
Do you want anything else? I go around the table here, so.
That's it. The zoning part needs to get straightened, more straightened out if you're going to attract anybody, because one of the challenges, if you're trying to come into a community and build something or do something, is understanding the rules, that the ground rules that are based around that. My limited time, we've had our discussions, there's been some confusion on what, yeah, what, what needs to be done somewhere. And I think that that would be, I, I think having that in '23, you got to get started on it.
John?
Might be helpful to have more specific information aligned with, for instance, you know, housing study, and then you've got, for instance, the specific organizations that you might want to contract with and how much that would cost. Same with the retail study, that sort of thing. So it, a little bit more definite information that we could act on. I guess that's what I think would be helpful for me, at least.
Hello?
I'm thinking my living in the housing world. I'm going through the housing example that you provided from Aguado. I thought was fascinating. Would love to see what that would feel like for, for Glendale. And definitely think that would address some of the concerns for District One, just to me, any of them is just how we can reprioritize or readdress some of the housing needs.
Eve?
You already commented that, you know, zoning is the first start of it. I think that, that goes a long way, and then that'll allow us to really utilize the zoning for the housing study and such. I'm mostly residential, and I've had people ask about, you know, accessory buildings and things like that, which I think we could do better with, with the size of our lots and density and such. So, yeah, I'd say target investment areas, it's, it's good to have some of these sprinkled in because, but I think we should focus on the areas that are fully underutilized or ones that are more depressed, where there's a lot of vacant spaces. So I think maybe the retail study would help with some things like along, I know Silver Spring, there's some open storefronts. But again, we're coming out of a pandemic, so I'm not sure really where we should be focusing with retail, considering, yeah, we have a lot of other activity elsewhere. Yeah, zoning and then housing, probably for me, and if commercial can fill in some spaces, all the better.
Brad?
At least in my area, I kind of agree with Alderman Vukovic, because housing in my area, we are pretty dense. And that does not mean we're stupid, we're just dense. But with respect to that, where do you go? Because we can't go, our, our lot lines are only so big compared to the rest of Glendale. The south side of Glendale just happens to be greatly populated, and obviously Glendale is, is one that we all apparently like, because we all live here. So with respect to that, for me, housing itself is a priority as well as my job opportunities, because people, you know, I'm one that doesn't go far from home. I live and work and play in majority of where I, you know, very close to home. So I'm housing and then the zoning code, because obviously in order to build housing and different types of housing, you have to have the zoning code there to accommodate it, to make sure it can be built the way you want to. Because I know Mill Road, it was having the condos, which changed into apartments, which has never been completed because the housing market fell out, but that's another one. And I know the, the company, the, the original owner had passed away, but his wife, I believe, is still around. But again, it went from condos to apartments to not being built after the one apartment, so. They did. I haven't been on that site for a little while. The other side of the tracks. You mean the other side of Mill Road? With respect, that's my, my thoughts as well. So thank you.
That helpful now?
That's good.
Okay.
Very good feedback. Thank you.
We'll bring something back to you, I think, in two weeks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate the, the proactive work of staff and bringing this to us now and getting input. And certainly appreciate you taking the lead on, on some of these things. It, it's not something we, we've done a great job of in the past, is going out actively and marketing the city to redevelopment. And so I think it's an excellent next step, so. All right, next item, item 5B, is review of Squad Bud Body Camera Cloud Storage.
I'll take this chief. In, in, last year in 2021, we purchased new squad cameras, new body cameras. As part of that process, we had bids from several different companies. And when we sat down and looked at them, one of the things that was really stuck out was the two options for storage. One was an onsite server and one is a cloud server. The cloud was an annual fee. We chose WatchGuard specifically over the Axon one, because the annual fees were a lot cheaper. But when we sat down with IT and everyone, we thought that we could do it with the onsite server, and that would save a significant amount of money, annual fees over the cloud storage. And we were wrong. It's, it's, we have one server and it is 61% full right now. And it was projected to be full by March of next year. It's just a lot more storage than we anticipated. The other portion of it is that when they design these systems, it's designed for the cloud storage, so it's a much easier to manage. We decided we could do it on our own, and that's a lot of runarounds and fixes, and it's, it's, it's just an extensive amount of work. So what we're looking for is to say, we made a big mistake. Instead of buying another server for $14,000, it's just going to get filled up. We're going to try to see if we can go to the cloud. That would be a one-time fee of basically $28,000 to migrate everything over, and then it's an annual fee of almost $23,000 a year. We'll try to sell the server, or we might be able to use it for city services, so it won't go to waste. I did talk to IT, he thinks there's no problem with that. It's not proprietary. But it's just another unexpected cost when it's this new technology. We kind of lived off our old, our old process. All the, all the new systems that come out, they basically tell you, you're paying it, you'll pay it for three to five years, and you're going to buy everything brand new all over again. So it's a continuous fee. Our old squad cameras were the same way, but we kept them about 10 years after end of life. So we thought, we're not paying all this extra money. We can do the same thing. It, it's just not working. So we're losing cases. We're, gotta give some affidavits in front of judges, because some of the data was lost and, and it's just getting worse and worse. So that's what we're looking for, is a total of $50,700 in, in 2023 to convert from the server over to a, a cloud storage, and then that would be another 22,800 annually. We did check with WatchGuard. They have not raised their annual storage fees for several years. They don't anticipate raising them, but that's never a guarantee, so.
If I have a question real quick, how long do we have to keep videos that we record?
Well, right now, there's the videos, it's, it's divided into two places, where you can set priorities for them. So anything that is involved with an arrest or has considered to be evidence, that is saved indefinitely, or at least until the case is over. So at a minimum, it's probably seven years. Traffic stops, anything like that, that has no evidentiary value, those are automatically saved, but they are purged from the system every 180 days. So we tend it, what we end up doing is making what we call cases. So if it's a case that goes, a criminal case or anything like that, we have to attach all the videos. The other issue we have is squad cameras were maybe one or two cars. Now you have squad cameras. You might have two or three officers, and now you have the body cams. Same thing as it's, our, our open records is, is gone through the roof, because everybody wants body cam footage. So it, it's, it's, it's just the way that, the way it is, so.
Ask a question. In the memo, there isn't an action for us, other than staff is asking the city council to direct staff to include this cost in the final 2023 city budget. So I'm going to ask, was it included in the budget already?
It was not in the budget. We're asking for direction to include it. The chief and I came up with this topic later after the budget was released. So we're asking for direction to include it in the 2023 budget.
We were hoping, when the budget was being prepared, we knew we had some server problems. We were expected to say, okay, maybe we can work through this, but we were hoping it would last longer. But it, it, in the last couple of months, it's jumped up, I think, from like 40% filled to 60% filled, so it's.
The majority of our discussions were revolved around waiting till 2024, and at the last minute, we elevated it to 2023. That's why it's here as a separate item.
Alderman Doherty?
How's it work in this data, as far as if we ultimately go with whatever firm you pick for cloud storage? I'm always concerned in the long run, what's the conversion from someone else? Because sometimes stuff ends up being proprietary encryption or, or proprietary data condensing, so you end up, you can't go somewhere else. I want to make sure whatever we're going with, we have the options that we own the data, and we can go where we want to go next if we change our mind.
Well, that, that is the one thing. We, we have WatchGuard, it's now bought by Motorola. That's their cloud storage. So if we were to go someplace else, then you have to pay for their cloud storage, so.
But the main thing I want to make sure is we can.
If the data is ours.
Somebody else, how's that, how's that conversion work?
Yeah, from my understanding of it, the data is all public, so the data is ours. We just have to pay the conversion fee like we're doing now to move it to a different.
I guess I'd like to see us have a couple other bids on, on who else you've talked to. I mean, cloud storage is getting to be
Everywhere.
We've moved everything, you know, in the corporate world, we've moved almost everything to some cloud storage somewhere. And we've had some challenges at times back in time if we didn't pick or make sure our contract was written in a way that made it easier to move.
My understanding is, is that if it's, whether we have WatchGuard right now, whether we took an ax on, it is their storage. That's how it works. Otherwise, it would be doing us the same thing as we'd be working our server. We'd just buy some other storage, and you still have the backend of. we'd be working our server, we just buy some other storage and you still have the backend of how the whole system.
I assume you have to move to a cloud storage. I'm not surprised at that. I'd be more surprised if we didn't. But I just the migration fees, I just want to make sure that we're freed up because it'll come a day, we may not be happy with whoever it is we go with. I just want to make sure we're
The migration.
Easy as we could to move.
The migration fees is is the one thing that they're basically saying, everything that we have on our server now, they will convert into the cloud. If we don't do that, then it's stuck on our server. And then you have the problem of being able to go back.
I agree you need to do it. I'm not. Okay, I'm more worried about the next move, not just this one.
It will make sure we ask those questions when we talk to the different contractors and have attorney look at the contract to make sure that it's not proprietary and that we can move it without any further penalties from.
I just be careful with the contract. Those have made a big difference in my business life anyway on how we execute it.
That's a very good point. Thank you.
Alderman Schmelzling.
So this is this cloud storage is like integrated the cameras. So like you don't it gets uploaded automatically and all of that, right?
Correct.
So how much time is being spent today managing the local storage of it?
Probably six to seven hours a day.
Okay.
And that's including the extra time it takes for the officers, how they have to prepare it and have to put it into one spot and it goes to another spot. So we can get into there. Send it to the DA's office, but I right now it's that's part of it. And then there's probably at least one person, one of our captains spends at least probably three hours to four hours a day just dealing with the data and trying to manage it.
So ultimately, like you can have local storage, but have it accessible via the cloud. But this is this is truly going to be cloud storage where you don't have to touch it as much and you'll get that time.
We wouldn't have to touch it all. We still have all complete access to it. In fact, it actually makes it much quicker and much easier right now. If 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 the way it works in the cloud is that if I have a video and they come back, they just have to tag it and says, we're keeping this. Boom, it's done. Now what they have to do is they have to create a bunch of cases and merge everything together to save it. Then it gets saved onto OneDrive so it can get submitted to the DA's office and then it gets converted over to the server. And then the bigger problem is that when you want to go back, you to try to delete this or anything, it's all manually done. So you have to manually search it. So.
Isn't scaling. I get it. Thank you.
It should get a full person back out of this.
Right. That's why I let somebody else do it. And I don't want to deal with that.
Alderman Gelhard.
Two questions. So is the cloud storage company going to handle the public information requests for these videos?
We would still do that. They're just storing it. So whenever someone comes up and wants to do an open records request for video, we can make a copy of it. It's much easier for us to make a copy from the cloud than it is from our server.
You mentioned in your memo that you're applying for a DOJ grant that might cover a portion of the migration fees. How much would that be if we get it?
Maybe five thousand. The the grant is written. It's a one time grant. It's laying good for five months, but it's supposed to be for new body cams, news, everything, someone buying something new. So we're making the argument with the state that well, this is new. We have it all, but we're buying a new cloud instead of a server. So they the way they rate it will be it's good for a five month period. So they would probably prorate it there. So we're hoping if we get consideration for it anywhere from, you know, maybe five to ten thousand dollars. We have no idea yet.
A second question. Okay, Alderman Vukovic.
Little concern because you said previously that you thought you could go until maybe twenty end of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, and then all of a sudden a big surge. And you've used up to sixty one percent. Are you going to be able to get to the end of the year for this to be in January? Or are you? Should you be considering something this year? Possibly because I I'm just trying to see, do you do you have enough? For the rest of the year?
Yeah, once we do this, we'll immediately start working on a contract and we'll talk to different cloud vendors. By the time we pay the bill and do all this stuff, it would be next year anyway. So it'd be for the twenty twenty three budget. So even if we implemented in November, December, I believe you pay the bill, it's January of twenty twenty three for the next year's budget.
Any other questions? So it it sounds like the consensus here is to put it into the budget. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're not noticed to take an actual vote on anything and we're not approving the budget anyway, but it sounds like they can. What I'm hearing from everybody is to put in the budget. So. All right. Next item, review and approval on a proclamation for White cane safety day. I had a constituent reach out and ask if we could do a resolution about white cane safety day. And that is if you have somebody who's blind walking with a cane with a white cane in there. They approach a crosswalk. State statutes are in that have been adopted in the municipalities state that the operator has to stop. If you see somebody who is blind with a cane, you're supposed to stop automatically so that they can cross. And so it's just a matter of us passing a a proclamation recognizing the date again for this year, which is October fifteenth. And then we can use that to help publicize, just to remind people they have to stop. So can I get a motion to approve the proclamation? Moved by Alderman Doherty, second of Alderman Schmelzling. Any discussion?
On typo, looks as paragraph, me or Brent Kennedy, Don behalf, I think on behalf.
Yeah, there's also one in the title that says it says white can safety day and not white cane. Yeah, so I already pointed the one out. I didn't actually catch the second one. So I won't. Those two minor typos will be made by the clerk and I'll sign it tomorrow. Yep. All right, all those in favor approving with those a couple of minor grammatical corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
Oced motion carries. And next is our annual proclamation on pregnancy and infant loss awareness month. And this year, there actually had is a group that reached out to the city asking us to pick a specific day, which is October fifteenth as pregnancy infant and infant loss awareness day. And I'm going to turn it over to Alderman Vukovic.
Every year we have a month of October is the prevention month and October fifteenth has always been the the day. Again, this is a close to me. My daughter was born in October fourteenth, twenty twenty October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and she lives seven days. And for years I went through where we couldn't talk about it, or you had postpartum, or people were scared to talk about it. Or or bring it up to me. So I think normalizing, we're always trying to normalize things, but normalizing the fact that people need to talk about this, that it is a an emotional thing, but they need to see that there is other people that are out there that are going through suffering through these things. This is this is just loss of not just, you know, stillbirths. Infancy, my daughter would lived a week and then she passed away. Some people, you know, some children live a year and they pass away. But it's still something that and some are not blessed to even been born, but it's still one of those things that we need to talk about. Need to understand that women's health care and and this is definitely and also fathers, because my husband refused to say a lot of times. You know, anything about it because he didn't want to trigger me, but we need to make sure that we're taking taking care of the this issue. Making sure that people are aware that thousands and thousands and thousands of women go through this and families go through this. And making sure that we kind of try to put it in the forefront that it's okay to talk about. It's okay to ask. The person will definitely say, I don't want to talk about it or we'll talk about it, but we're not aliens. So I thank you for putting this in, man.
Um, and then what was this? This one of, I guess this organization has reached out to municipalities all around the area, but they'll be lighting the home pink and blue on October fifteenth. So can I get a motion then to approve the proclamation?
Oh, move.
Moved by Alderman Doherty is seconded, Alderman Gelhard. Okay, any discussion? Thank you, Alderman, for bringing this forward every year. Appreciate that. All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oced. Motion carries. And I just signed the proclamation. All right. And next, our commission committee board and staff reports. I'll start this time. The MMSD this morning met, we did approve the budget, or I guess the committee approved the budget, the full commission will approve it. Just to let folks know, the budget went up, the operations budget went up six point nine percent. It'll be a hundred and seventeen point seven million. That's the cost of all of the sanitary sewer and stormwater work that MMSD does throughout the region. The capital budget, which is something that appears on our tax levy. So when you get your tax bill, the MMSD portion on there, that is actually going up by sixteen point three percent. The total amount this year for the capital budget is two hundred and thirty two point two million. And part of that has to do with MMSD took on the a major cleanup of the entire Milwaukee estuary. And so it involves building a dredged material maintenance facility adjacent to the Port Milwaukee. That cost is almost two hundred million dollars. So we 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 pay locally to build the facility where as everything is dredged out of all of the all the tributaries of the different rivers, all of the contaminated stuff goes to a specific spot and is stored forever. And so we pay to build it, but the EPA is actually paying several hundred million dollars more. I think the total cost of the project is about seven hundred and fifty million dollars. So they're going to be paying for all the cleanup work. We just locally have to foot the bill for building the dredge materials maintenance facility. And so that's why the the two budget items, I did already tell you that so the levy is going up three percent. And user fees are up five point eight percent. So I did announce those earlier. And then this afternoon at the ICC meeting, the major item on the agenda has to do with the public safety answering point grant that the state created. So when we call nine one one, there are thirteen different nine one one dispatches in Milwaukee County. But the way the legislation was written at the state level, of course, they try and do a one size fits all. It says that one, these are called PSAPs. So one public safety answering point can get the funds. Well, in, you know, Rusk County, there is only one nine one one dispatch. And in most of the counties, there's only one, or in some cases there are two. But one of them is a bigger one and that's makes sense. If we have thirteen in Milwaukee County, and so we had a big discussion today about what how we wanted to move forward with that. The leading contenders, there are three. The city of Milwaukee, Milwaukee County and North Shore. And North Shore actually is in the best situation because they they actually are are they do every single thing that the legislation says you have to be able to do. And Milwaukee County, Milwaukee City aren't quite at the level of being able to do everything. And it's largely just being the fiscal agent of the funds. You get the funds and then you help distribute those funds to the other nine one one dispatches for improvement of technology or for training of staff or things of that nature. And so we actually already do all the stuff for our nine one one dispatch that this funds would allow us to be able to present that for the county. But as with anything, when there's money involved, this has been now spread out over several meetings and city wants it, county wants it, North Shore wants it. And so I actually did the 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 motion today to create a subcommittee and actually develop a governance structure. So if we're going to give it to one nine one one dispatch PSAP that they will have a structure under which they're going to receive the money. And there will be say and how that money gets distributed so that one person has to be the fiscal agent, but that doesn't mean that they just get the money and keep it and do with it, whatever, you know, the legislation says. We're actually creating a structure by which if one of them gets it, this is how the money is entirely governed. So almost essentially like how Maddak runs. You know, we all contribute to Maddak and then Maddak has a board and that board oversees how the funds are distributed. So we're going to move to do the same thing. So I tried to find a compromise point today because three nine one one dispatch is fighting with each other. I don't want to see this going on for months and months. Why? Yeah. So so that that's those are the biggest things that came up in my report. There is no fire department board meeting tomorrow. We are meeting on November first. The reason we chose November first is because the bids close on October thirtieth for the Glendale Fire Station. So we'll be opening those bids and hopefully awarding a contract. Alderman Gelhard.
I just had a question on that last item that you mentioned. So would it be possible under this plan to just have one fiscal agent for Milwaukee County that would be the recipient of those monies and then redistribute to thirteen nine one one centers? Is that possible?
Yeah, the problem is is that any one of the three. There was discussion actually at the meetings about, well, they didn't trust that they would actually distribute. And so that was what led to, you know, and one of the things I said was, you know, in the North Shore, we are already seven communities. We already have a great deal of trust and collaboration here and Bayside is the fiscal agent for a number of different services. Glendale is a fiscal agent for some of them. I mean, we we all take turns being fiscal agent for different things. Brown Deer is the fiscal agent for the Health Department. I mean, so we already know how to take the money in and then spend it on whatever it's supposed to be spent on appropriately. But that concept eludes some of the other municipalities. And so I thought, well, if we have to create a governance structure for it, then we'll create a governance structure. If I were to venture a guess right now, I would say that that because of distrust of county and city, North Shore is is likely going to end up with it at some point, but there will be a whole structure in place by the time they do get it. So. And it's not a significant amount of money in the first year. In the first year, it's eighty thousand dollars to be spent on training and and technology upgrades in the county. However, once that PSAP designee is in place, all future federal money that comes into the state and gets distributed to all the nine one one dispatches. Any future, anything that the state gives, that's going to be the entity that does the receiving of it. And so that's why it's it's important that this first year, while there's not a lot of money at stake, there could potentially be down the line, significant amounts of money. And so having a governance structure and then having a fiscal agent for it that that we can all trust and know that they're they're bound by an agreement is is the reason I made the motion I made today. So. All right. So that's my report. I think this time I will start with six and we'll go backwards. So six.
I know the North Shore Library had a finance committee last week, but unfortunately I couldn't attend, but the North Shore Library Director is here in the audience. If she would like to give a report on behalf of the North Shore Library, Rhonda.
Sure.
Mike.
Welcome. It's wonderful to have you here. Can you lean forward and speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. Thank you for having me come up here this evening. We met last week on Thursday, our finance committee with several of our board members and we have approved our budget as.
Corner of the mic.
All right. I'll sit up close. So the budget will go before the board next week at our full board meeting. And I think like Carla said earlier this evening, we we did not budget for anything that was not necessary. And I I think we'll we'll still be very well funded or funded enough to to function well. Let's put it that way.
And then there's also a board of directors meeting on the twentieth.
Yes.
At nine, everyone's invited if you'd like to come. It also, they also have Zoom. And I know Carl also attended the finance committee meeting in my, well, as well as the city administrator. So.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alderman Doherty.
You're going to have an update just on the fundraising, not necessarily here, but it's meant at some point. Not from you now. I didn't mean that.
Okay.
I just asked such a question in general. I thought we
You happen to know?
About having.
Yeah, where where the fundraising is for the the new library?
We are still working on it. There's been a couple glitches here and there, as you all know, and right now we are waiting for some of our larger donors to decide what they'll be doing by the end of the year. And once that's all determined, then we'll be able to pick up the pace and and start moving forward on that.
Alderman Schmelzling.
I noticed on the website for the the new library that the total price tag is now showing is twelve million with four million being the property space itself and another eight million for the build out. So is is that the new target that they're going towards for fundraising?
Twelve million is the the very highest level. Some of that has increased because there's been discussion about starting an endowment fund for the library so that we don't have to return to the municipalities here and there for improvements on anything.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anything, anything else, Alderman Chell? Okay, okay, number five.
Nothing to report.
All right, number four.
Nothing to report.
Number three.
Nothing to report this evening.
Number two. Number two.
Nothing to report.
One. All right, now we'll go to staff. Chief.
Nothing to report.
Clerk. Absentee ballots are out.
Yes.
Okay, you're all ready. You got a full staff. Excellent. City Attorney.
I would just mention that as we head up to election day, there continues to be additional litigation that's been filed. Generally, the pattern is the latest one was filed in Waukesha County like the others were and and again, challenges some of the practices associated with the handling of absentee ballots. In this particular case, it relates to the spoliation of ballots and how those are handled and and what the what the rules are. And and the the interesting thing about what's been happening is the 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 groups have been successful in essentially getting orders from the circuit court in in Waukesha that directs the WEC to withdraw some of the previous direction that had given to clerks. And so they've been doing that, but there hasn't been a whole lot forthcoming from WC in response to that. They're a little shell-shocked and.
There's no new direction.
Yeah, and that's part of the problem. So we've been, they did put something out earlier on on the latest, but it's not terribly helpful. But so I've been working with the clerk as these issues have arisen and trying to interpret you know, the the directives and the orders and then the withdrawal of of the direction by WEC to make sure that we're we're not only complying with the the law, but doing everything humanly possible to ensure that everyone that has the right to vote can do so within the parameters of the the latest lawsuits. And I anticipate that this will probably continue. But between now and and the date of the election, I doubt that there's time for the Court of Appeals to weigh in on any of these. And what is that? Oh. Right. Oh, it's a box holder. Okay. So I, and my guess is as we get closer to the election, you know, these will, these will continue. So we will continue to work collaboratively to keep up on top of all of that. And I'll continue to work with the clerk to ensure that we're complying with the law.
Alderman clerk, did you want to?
According to Election Commission, the reason they haven't said anything was they met on Friday and then they were meeting today at 3:00 PM, but they can't give an official word until they have the court order, which was supposed to come to them today, but they can't direction on the spoiled ballot issue until they have the court order in their hand. And as of this morning, when I talked to someone, they didn't have that. So hopefully tomorrow. I mean, so we have general guidance on what we can and can't do with spoiled ballots, but not the official word. So we'll see.
Thank you. Else for the attorney?
I think generally, unfortunately, that may lead practices municipalities. So I've been trying to compare notes and touch base with some of the other municipal attorneys in Milwaukee County and see if there's any consistency on on some of these as we move forward. So we'll continue to to work on it and try to get it, get it right and ensure that everyone has their ability to exercise their right to vote.
As of right now, it's basically once you've returned your ballot, though, you are not able to revote. So if you choose, if you think that you want to vote for someone else, you are not able to do that. So.
Whereas previously, you, the ballot could be a spoiled ballot, which would be, it would never be counted, it would be destroyed, but.
And then you could vote again. Yes. So like in August, because there were so many people who dropped out of the race, they came, people came in and they could spoil up until the Thursday before the election and that is not the case anymore. It's one and done. Once it's returned. So.
The administrator?
So the Chick-fil-A restaurant is scheduled to open this Friday. The ribbon cutting is on Thursday at 10:00 AM if everybody wants to come. We have met diligently with staff to ensure that there will not be any traffic issues associated with the opening of this drive-through only restaurant. An article came out yesterday listing Chick-fil-A as the slowest drive-through restaurant. I don't know if anybody saw that article and it wasn't.
I gotta tell you, Portillo's is the slowest drive-through.
But they didn't include Portillo's because it's not a national chain, but I, and they they went into depth that it was because of the amount of customers, not because of their operations of why it's the slowest wait time of all of them. So I thought it was funny. I distributed it to some of the staff members here. So we have a plan with the police in case the traffic spills out on a poor Washington road, which we assume it will at least during the opening weekend. The only other thing I have is that homecoming is this weekend. There will be no bonfire associated with the homecoming as they don't have a representative from the fire district to be present to to help. That is correct. Is that correct, chief? You talked to them?
Yes, my understanding is that someone from the fire department, either it's either Nicolay didn't want to pay the fee or the fire department just said, we don't have anyone to come over and do that. So there's no bonfire. Apparently years past, like Joanne mentioned, Brian Riles, who was the fire chief in Deanville was there. I was always under the impression that it was like contracted through the fire department, but apparently it wasn't. So no bonfire.
Question for somebody?
No, this was a timely joke. I was going to say, is it too late to build an on-ramp directly on the 43? With as part of the 43 expansion.
Well, hopefully the Hampton Road might contribute work. So glad that's close for right now.
Laugh, but do you all recall that there used to be an on-ramp to Southbound I-43 off of G Nicolay?
I used to use it all the time.
Did you? Yes, it was an on-off at a stop sign.
It was a tough deal.
Stop sign to get on the freeway.
You had to treat that like a ghillie. I can say that now the statute of limitations is run.
Goodness. All right, we are noticed for a closed session to discuss employment, promotion, compensation, wage or performance issues. So can I get a motion to convene in closed session? Moved. Moved by Alderman Shaw, second of Alderman Bailey. All those in favor of convening in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, and we are not planning any action afterwards. So anybody who is wanting to wait around afterwards, all we'll be doing is reconvening in open session and adjourning the meeting. So. All right, we now stand in closed session. I don't know. Ask him. Jim, where was the on-ramp on Nicolay, G Nicolay?
So you came, you come up vendor and you did it south and they were vendors out.
We've now reconvened in open session. Alderwoman Shaw made the motion to reconvene in open session, seconded by Alderman Bailey, just making sure it's on the recording here for Megan. So it was unanimous. So we're now in open session. We have no agenda items before us, nothing to consider out of our closed session. It was a play performance discussion, so it would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Galhard. Seconded by half the council. All those in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.